We're going to get started here. I'd like to call the March 18th Regular Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. McAvina?
Here.
Mrs. El Pascar?
Here.
Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stovey?
Here. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we jump into our meeting, we have a couple of special presentations, but I just want to acknowledge a couple of things before we get started here. And I know that there are a number of folks that listen to these recordings online, and we have about 30 or so people here in person. So I just want to kind of remind everyone that when it comes to the business of our board, everything that we do has to be laid out on our agendas, and is -- we advertise those. And today, we will go through each one of them, and we will have discussions about certain items. And I would really just continue to encourage those of you who are investing the time to listen to our meetings to get your information here directly from the board, not through social media or other places. We are not immune to knowing that there are a lot of things that get shared on Facebook that are just blatantly untrue. And, you know, I guess I just wanted to address those things that the business of the board is conducted here. And I guess when I talk about that, talk about where we're at as a board, you know, those of us who have been coming to meetings for last months, few months since November, know that we have had a number of difficult situations to work through. When our levees failed, we've had to navigate some very difficult decisions, some unpopular decisions when it comes to things like year review and kindergarten, our athletic programs, busing, and so forth. And I guess I just want to say that I recognize that the leaders of our district are doing the best they can to work through these decisions and processes as best they can. And some of these issues are interrelated, so information doesn't come out necessarily in the time or format that people may like because other business is being conducted. But I just want to say that the board has the full support of our leadership team as they work through this. And I just would love to see that our community rally behind our leaders here who are spending so much of their time trying to get things right. So I wanted to set that tone today to address some of the negative things that have been said, and just to say that we as a board are very supportive of our administration team. So with that, I will transition to the start of our meeting.
All right. Well, we have a school spotlight this month, Learwood Middle School, and I'm going to introduce Dr. Nugget, and he has some special guests with him this evening.
Welcome. We have a great surprise. Can you make sure you use the microphone? Thank you.
So we've been having students come for each meeting, highlighting what's happening in schools. For today's presentation, we want to show how we are supporting our students at school because we have students each day that walk through the halls, have things happen at home, happening at school that affect them. And they need a little bit of support. They are stressed at times. They need time to de-escalate. They may have feelings that need to share. And they go to our counselors, but sometimes they don't want to share with anybody. And sometimes they just need five, 10 minutes to de-escalate to get back to their normal routines. So here, we were able to partner up with the JCH Foundation, and I have Beth and Rick Haney here today, who will be also speaking. They have sponsored our school and created a John Safe Space, an area which we'll see in a video shortly, is where we have students go when they need a couple of minutes to come back down, to get settled, to be back to their normal sense. We do this because we know that middle school is a hard time for kids, and we want to make sure we can support them emotionally and socially as well, along with the education that they do receive. So I will introduce Rick and Beth Haney, and just second, let them speak. But we do have a short video which kind of explains what John Safe Space is, how it kind of came about, and then I will let them share their story as well. Thank you.
Sorry about that. We just lost it there. Let's see if we can get it back. We're just waiting for the video to stop buffering. Yeah. We had it going. We had it tested, and just making sure we still have Internet. Go through it one more time. It's done what we did before. It's working. Made it work before, just a minute. Well, I need all of these. Yeah. Usually, just double-click on it. It opens right up. I've watched it like three times now to make sure. There it is. All right. All right. Well, Dr. Nugget, would you like to?
So, the video was awesome.
It was really good. I've seen it a couple of times.
Mrs. Gardner gave us a nice little helpless video. Video camera.
The video talks basically about the JCH Foundation. It also shows us the room that's been created. Just visualize this, a small space. It's about 10 by 8. Got a two-person couch, a beanbag chair, a nice fish tank, 68 gallons, I believe, fish tank. We still send those off with fish. Many manipulatives on the desk where students play around with, some puzzles, some coloring books, different activities that they can do to get back to their sense of self. So we understand that life can be stressful. School, friendships, responsibilities, and personal challenges can sometimes feel overwhelming. We want you to know that you're not alone, and that we're here to support you. That's why we have John Safe Place, a place where you can take a short break if you need it.
After John graduated from college, he went on, we'll call this where his sister was, and some things must have been changing that nobody even knew about. John was fighting, he's side with the bad old man. I didn't know. Beth didn't know. Our family didn't know. His best friends had no idea.
A big teddy bear is the phrase that Rick and Beth Haney use to describe their son, John. He was the life of the party and loved by many. He was an avid football player, enjoyed fishing, and spending time with his family. In 2017, John took his own life.
What was so tragic for us and our family to go on to be something good. We say, John's story isn't over, because it's not. And we're going to make sure others people know, and these kids know that it's okay.
Shortly after his passing, the John C. Haney Memorial Foundation was created. Through this foundation, the idea of John's Safe Place, a room of comfort for students who are experiencing social, emotional issues, was developed.
This is where we need to be today, to do what we're doing to help others. And this is going to hopefully make a difference in others' lives.
If you're feeling anxious, frustrated, or just need a moment to reset, this space is available to help you de-escalate and regain your focus. Here's how it works. If you're feeling stressed, we encourage you to first visit your counselor. After speaking to your counselor, you can access John's Safe Place if needed. John's Safe Place is a quiet, comfortable, and private area where you can take a break. You can use this space for up to 10 minutes at a time. This is a judgment-free zone. No one will ask you why you need a break. In order to honor privacy and provide a space to de-stress, only one person can be placed in a room at a time. We encourage you to use the time to breathe, reflect, or simply relax before returning to your day. If you feel like you need to use John's Safe Place, just let a teacher or staff member know, and they will give you a pass to see your guidance counselor. Remember, taking care of your mental and emotional well-being is important. We want you to feel safe, supported, and ready to succeed. John's Safe Place is here whenever you need a moment. Step away and reset. So we have now sent this video out to our students yet. We just finished it up, but we're going to put this on our website and send it to students. We came in on February 15th, Saturday morning, and we have some extra help to set up the room. And I could tell you, the very first day of school, which was that Tuesday, it's been used every day, multiple times a day by students. And it's something we haven't talked to them about. So we want to get this to students so they understand that if there's a time that they need a little extra support, they can come down to us, they can come down to the office. We have to see their counselors first because we want to make sure it's nothing tragic that we have to deal with right away. We want to make sure we're there to support them. We also want to give them some time for themselves to recoup. So with no further ado, I'll go to Mr. Vincent's meeting.
Not sure who to address here. So we'll just stay right here, okay? She won't have to go too far. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to share, to share John's story, and share what this God-given mission we have to go out and help others deal with some of these issues in today's world. I think it's a good way to put it. The video pretty much says it all about what John Safe Place is about, but I wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight talking about my son. John was, John was an incredible, incredible person. I'm not saying that just because he's my son, but he was. But he obviously had some problems that nobody knew about, absolutely nobody. One of the first things that we mention when we go and we talk in the schools is, how many John Haney's do you have walking your hallways right now that are fighting a silent battle that nobody knows about, that they don't know where to go to get the help, or they don't think that they can get the help that they need to deal with so many things? Listen, folks, we were, we are in a world today that we never as children had to deal with things that our kids are dealing with today. Social media is one of the, one of the things that we, it's a good thing, but it's been very detrimental to our youth. You know, there's no decompression whatsoever. They leave school, and it continues on on the weekend with the social media, the bullying, so many other different things. But John was the least, he was a person that was expected to do what he did, taking his own life. He was happy. He was always smiling, always trying to please people. He was, had such a huge personality. People would just gravitate to him. He's one of those people where you walk in a room, and he just lit it up. And he had a lot of friends. And with that said and done, that's why we were so blindsided by what happened on November 12th of 2017, when we received a phone call from our daughter that John had taken his own life. We thought everything was fine. We had just talked to him the night before. He had already filled his truck up to go to work. He had plans for next week, so I don't know what happened. But that's what happens a lot of times when we deal with our silent battles and some of the things that are going on right now with our mental stability and our emotions. So he was a very caring person, and it was mentioned in the video that he was known for his bear hugs. You could see he was, he was a big man. He played college football and box squat at 685 pounds, one of the top on the team to do so, and yes, I'm a proud Papa for that. He was just, just that kind of a person. He was always for the underdog. Put up with anybody being bullied or anything like that. And I'm going to let my wife share in the manner of that. But he was all about football from a young child, fourth grade all the way through middle school, all the way through high school, all the way through college. He went to Walden Wallace University, played football for the Yellow Jackets. He started playing in fourth grade. He played for the Fairview Warriors through high school. He's part of the 2011 Warriors team that won their division championship for the first time since 1953. Played in the Cleveland Browns East versus West All-Star Game. Then he went on to fulfill a dream of playing college football at Walden Wallace University for four years and graduated in 2016. 2016, he moved to Columbus to be with his sister. He had gotten a job there, and that's, that's where we lost him. There were over 900 people at John's funeral that night, and this is what we heard a lot of. If John Haney can do this, anybody can do this. And that's an eye-opener, because that just tells you the significance of what we need in the world today and what we need in our schools today. From that point on, my wife and I, I said, we consider this a God-given mission, and it's exactly as our mission feels. We are out there trying to help students, not just students, adults alike. I mean, listen, suicide is not a respecter of persons. It starts at the little kids, all the way up to senior citizens. And I know this, you know, with what we do, I look at statistics, and it's just unbelievable how it affects people. But with that said and done, we wanted to do something to make a difference. So we started the JCH Foundation. It started off basically as something to keep John's memory moving forward. We would give out, and we still do give out, a $1,000 scholarship to Fairview High School seniors as they pursue their, going on in the future with college. We're looking to probably try to expand that out to all of our other schools now as we move forward. But, and we support, we supported the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We do anything we can to do, to deal with that. But we saw a bigger need in 2019, I think it was, when one of our friends, it's a teacher at Fairview, we were recognizing that the kids were hiding under the stairs, crying to deal with issues. The kids were going to the bathroom crying because they had nowhere else to go. They'd go to the football field. They'd go under the bleachers. And we said to them, you know, this is not right. They need a place to go to that they can get the help that they need, regardless of what the situation is. They can be, have people put around them that truly care about them, the principals, their counselors, their teachers, and not be judged in what's going on. You know, we always say that it's okay not to be okay, but there's such a stigma with mental illness. You know, people think it's a sign of weakness, and that's one thing that my son was not. He was not weak. If he would have just reached out, he would have had the help that he needed. But they don't know what to do when they get into those situations. And with our foundation, we're trying to change that stigma of mental health issues, okay? So what we did, we, we then started with the John Safe Place rooms. Now, the John Safe Place rooms is not the only thing we do, but is our primary thing. Right now, we've got 31 schools throughout northeast Ohio that have the John Safe Place rooms. Our latest would be Learwood. And might I say, your staff here in Avon is absolutely incredible. We are now dealing with Troy Intermediate School. We'll be putting one in there after spring break. We'll be getting them the paint, and they're going to get that room all prepped up for that. It's just, and they're such a great, great, wonderful group of people to work with over there. I'm dealing with Kelly Long right now, and she's just a tremendous person. But we're trying to get into a therapy dog and stuff like that, just a bunch of different things that we can help others deal with this. Now, let's go back one step, and I'm going to have my wife speak. I'll just hold this for you, sweetheart, so you don't have to. Let's, we want to share where the John Safe Place room name came from.
Well, first thing I want to tell you is that I'm an early education teacher at Fairview Park City Schools. So we are starting with the youngest children in the district and talking about social, emotional learning, and self-regulation, and learning to cope, and giving them coping skills. But the reason why John Safe Place came is at John's funeral, we had a bunch of trifles out, and there was a young man that kept walking back and forth, and he was visibly upset. And Rick's sister went over to see if he was okay, and he just told him, he said, I would have never made it through junior high or high school if it not had been for John Haney. And she said, well, why? And he said, because I was always bullied and picked on, and, you know, people would, you know, call me names and stuff. He said, but if I heard John Haney's voice in the hallway, I knew I was safe. So he made sure that the kids that needed help got help, so that's why we named them the John Safe Place, and that's why they're there now.
That's the toughest part of what we talk about when we, when we talk about the JCH Foundation. What's that? That's probably a good idea. This is what happens when you miss a couple steps and fall down. So we're here today because we want to make a difference, and that's what we're doing with the John, the John C. Foundation, with the John Safe Place rooms. We just want these kids to understand that they have hope in a world where it seems like there's not hope around them anymore. And our son is making a difference in so many other people's lives right now. It's tough. I wish it wasn't us that had to do it. On November 12th, 2017, our lives changed completely. This is our, this is what we do. This is what we do. This is not where I thought we'd end up with retiring. But can I tell you, it's a blessing to be able to be out here and doing this and helping others and deal with people like Mr. Nugget and all the other teachers that we've had and all the other schools that we've had. Just a little food for thought. And we're not about, we're really not about numbers at all. You know, if this helps one kid, that's all that matters. We have so many, you know, I would encourage you to go to the JCH Foundation website, and there's a lot of testimonials on there, but, I lost my train of thought. Okay, there you go. Thank you. That's what happens when you get old. Give it, give us a little bit of thought. We have 31 schools right now. If you take the 31 schools, and the average amount that these rooms are being used right now, and this is, this is at the low end, is about 42 students a month. We've had reports of it being used 82 times in a month in some schools. But if you go with that, if you go with that 45, and then you take that and you multiply it times a 31, okay? And then when you take that and you multiply the nine months, this, this all ends up being that there's over 12,555 kids that have gone through our John Safe Place rooms. And that's why we're here. That's why we want to be out there trying to get this room in as many schools as we possibly can. And what an honor, what a privilege it is to be able to be in Learwood and now go into Troy. It's awesome. It's just, it's a blessing to us. So thank you for having us tonight. I could talk more, but I don't want to take up all of your time. But thank you, you're having us.
Can we get everybody on?
All right. So as you can see, they have made a big impact already in what the space does. And like I said, without talking about it with our students, we already have students in there every day. And we do monitor that, just so if we see an uptake, we know that we have to interject right away with students, and we always let parents know as well. So it's not something we keep hidden. We work as a family in school and out of school and for our kids. So thank you very much. We really do appreciate everything that you guys have done, and we'll continue following the steps.
Thank you. I commend you for your efforts, taking care of our children and providing a safe space.
Yeah, I think as a district, we need to continue to champion this and see how we can expand this to more schools and keep telling the story. It's a great story. Yeah, thank you again. Very beneficial. And actually, I was at Troy today, maybe yesterday? No, I was there today. And they were actually talking about the space and, you know, looking at getting it painted and getting it going, so I know they're very excited about it as well. Okay, I have a couple more pieces in my presentation. Alice Ogonnick, our gifted coordinator, unfortunately had a death in the family, so she's not able here, to be here with me to present. So I'm going to do a little bit of presentation for you this evening, but I want to start by letting everyone know, if you're not aware, next Thursday at 6:00 PM, there will be a elementary gifted parent information night in the PAC at 6:30 PM, not 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM. And we will have more information for parents, especially those parents going, that have children going into third and fourth grade that are in the gifted program. Mrs. McAvina, last month, you asked me numbers on SOAR and gifted at the elementary level. So this year, we have 58 students in SOAR, but we have 193 students with gifted identification in third and fourth grade. So we are actually servicing 29.3% with our SOAR program, which is one of the reasons that we're moving to the gifted clustering model. Yeah. Okay. So I'm not going to read the screen. This will all be up for you. But basically, gifted clustering is taking students with a gifted identification, and we have gifted identification in math, reading, and cognition. And it's clustering them into a classroom with other gifted students. It's not tracking. It's not a full class of gifted students where you see, for example, at Troy and at Learwood and the high school, we have the PLUS and the honors classes and so forth. That's more of a tracking. This is not. This is concentrating students with a gifted identification in one or two classrooms per grade level at each building based on the size of the school and the number of gifted students at that school. So that's a key difference. It's, it works on putting the kids together based on their strength and allowing the classroom teacher with support from our gifted intervention specialist to be able to meet the kids' needs on a daily basis versus a one-day-a-week pullout where they're being pulled out of their classroom for the entire day. So why does it work? Based on the research, obviously, the interaction when they're working with other students that challenge and inspire them, it challenges and inspires them to achieve things, not just by themselves, but when they work collaboratively. And as you've heard me say many times, our future for all of our kids is being able to work collaboratively. When you go out in the job market nowadays, soft skills are just as important as knowledge and aptitude because we are living in a society that needs problem solvers and creative thinkers, and this is one of the benefits of the gifted clustering program. There's differentiation. Differentiation is, takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of support. And as you see, as we go through this program, this presentation, we have opportunities built in to support and allow the teachers to have time to collaborate. And it's efficient use of resources. No, no longer will gifted be something that you go to one day a week, and it's just kind of a resource, but it will be integrated daily in your classroom. Benefits for students, a lot of them, realistic perceptions of abilities, better understanding and acceptance of differences, again, creative and critical thinking, consistent challenges, and there's also social, emotional support. Very often, you'll It's not a full class of gifted students where you see, for example, at Troy and at Learwood and the high school, we have the plus and the honors classes and so forth. That's more of a tracking. This is not. This is concentrating students with a gifted identification in one or two classrooms per grade level at each building based on the size of the school and the number of gifted students at that school. So, that's a key difference. It's, it works on putting the kids together based on their strength and allowing the classroom teacher with support from our gifted intervention specialist to be able to meet the kids' needs on a daily basis versus a one-day-a-week pullout where they're being pulled out of their classroom for the entire day. So, why does it work? Based on the research, obviously the interaction, when they're working with other students that challenge and inspire them, it challenges and inspires them to achieve things, not just by themselves, but when they work collaboratively. And as you've heard me say many times, our future for all of our kids is being able to work collaboratively. When you go out in the job market nowadays, soft skills are just as important as knowledge and aptitude because we are living in a society that needs problem solvers and creative thinkers and this is one of the benefits of the gifted clustering program. There's differentiation. Differentiation is, takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of support and as you see, as we go through this program, this presentation, we have opportunities built in to support and allow the teachers to have time to collaborate. And it's efficient use of resources. No, no longer will gifted be something that you go to one day a week and it's just kind of a resource, but it will be integrated daily in your classroom. Benefits for students, a lot of them, realistic perceptions of abilities, better understanding and acceptance of differences. Again, creative and critical thinking, consistent challenges, and there's also social, emotional support. Very often you'll read or hear about, sometimes people say, "Oh, that kid's too smart for his own good" or, you know, "He thinks on a different level." Well, now there's the social, emotional support of being around other kids who think on that level or have the same abilities or interests that maybe aren't as recognized beyond the, you know, what's typically done in the classroom. There's a whole bunch of additional information that's research-based that you can take a look at on the, when I upload this to the agenda. Benefits for teachers, it targets instruction more efficiently. Instead of having kids at like five different levels in a gifted cluster classroom, you typically have students that are gifted and you have students at various ranges of average ability who also benefit from being, have been exposed to those as well. Teachers will receive professional development and ongoing support, not only from Alice Ogonnick, our gifted coordinator, but Kristen Morris, our gifted intervention specialist. She'll be in the larger buildings two days a week and at Westview one day a week to work with the teachers, to plan with the teachers, to do some pullout, to reinforce some skills and also to work with second graders as they get ready to move into the gifted cluster in third and fourth grade. So, these are all the services that we offer. We offer with this new model, curricular enrichment, co-teaching opportunities, differentiated instruction support, project-based learning facilitation, grade two enrichment activities. And again, our current program is servicing 29.3% of our identified gifted students in grades three and four. Principals have been meeting to talk about implementation in their building. They'll work with their grade-level teachers to identify the teachers that will be working with the cluster groups and that changes from year to year or each building may have it set up just a little bit differently to meet their building's needs. The, I talked about the parent night already. There will be quarterly planning sessions where we'll have all the gifted cluster teachers in the district. We'll have the third grade in the morning, fourth grade in the afternoon. They'll get together and plan, talk about what's going well, what needs tweaked. We, we know there'll be some bumps along the way. The first year, there's bumps along the way in every new program, but we'll work through that with giving them support and make adjustments as needed. Any questions on that piece?
Just a clarifying question, Jack, and I think you said it at the very beginning. But these kids will still be intermingled.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's not a track. It's they will be intermingled, but we will be concentrating them. So, for example, at Redwood and Eastview where we have four sections of third and fourth grade in each of those buildings, they'll be in two of the four sections so that they're concentrated.
Got it.
Okay.
I think you implied this, but currently we're servicing 29% of the children identified and this new program will take care of 100%.
Correct. Our SOAR program, and it's been very difficult for parents because every year I get lots of requests for, can you, can you please retest my child? Is there any way you can? And, and when the program was set up, and this is pre-Jack, so when the program was set up, it was set up with very tight criteria and we did offer retesting and we still do, you know, retesting at a parent, but they can only be tested once a year. So, it's not like we can keep testing them over and over like they can do for the third grade reading guarantee, but it's, you know, this is a way to be more inclusive for all of our gifted students. Okay.
Do we have any concerns based on your experience, Jack, about the classrooms that don't have gifted students in them for my?
No, because they'll also have high-average students who maybe aren't gifted, but they're still straight A students. They're still, again, we are a very high-performing district. We have a very high percentage of our kids are high-performing. So, they might not have the gifted identification, but they will still be in, you know, being challenged and having achievement and still have different abilities in, in all of the rooms.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, well, moving on to enrollment update, let me start by saying anyone that applied for the kindergarten lottery did get a spot. We did not have to do the lottery. We actually planned about the right number of sections. We still do have some spots at each of the buildings and we'll continue to accept enrollment for full day until a class gets filled up at a building and we'll still follow the process like we do now. If one school gets full, they can go to another school. Right now, we have just a couple spots at Westview because that's, we're only having one section there. We still have a little over 10 spots at Redwood. Redwood has quite a few spots and then Eastview has maybe just under 10 spots left. So, that's where we're at with that. I do want to talk about a couple.
Hold on, hold on before you move on. And I'm just doing this for the benefit of people that might listen a little bit later. So, the full-day kindergartens at Westview, Redwood and Eastview.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else on that before I move on?
I'm only doing that because people continue to ask these questions.
Sure.
So, hopefully the more that we can reiterate that, you know, to your point, Jim.
And I'll reiterate, you know, kind of what Jim was saying. If anyone that's listening has a question, feel free to call me or email me. I'm happy to share the information. It's also all on our website. You can either go to the assistant superintendent page and click registration or you can go to the district page and click registration and it's all there. Okay, at the other elementaries, I just want to give a little bit of update on where we're at and I'm going to first work backwards. So, we have enrollments today. We have, based on where all of the kids from Erieview were rezoned to based on their addresses and based on the things that we said we would do. And I'm going to give you some information, some numbers today, but I'm going to tell you they are going to change and here's why they're going to change. We have open enrollment in this district, which we've always had, where we've allowed parents to request their child to maybe if they live in one.
Intra?
Intra-district.
Yeah.
Sorry. Intra-district. I want to make sure I don't get in trouble there. So, maybe they live in Eastview District, but they want to go to Westview or they want to. So, we honor those as spaces available. I have about 40 requests right now for open enrollment and the requests go all the way through the end of March before we start filling them. We also do something else, which has been going on here for years and years and years is when a classroom hits a certain level and it kind of differs by grade, we will close that grade level at that building and if we have a lot of spots at another building, we will send people to the other building and provide transportation. Doesn't happen very often, but it has happened every year since I've been here at some grade level or some building. We also, let me just start there. So, I already talked a little bit about kindergarten. At first grade, we are having next year, four sections at Eastview, three at Redwood and three at Westview. For those of you who are wondering, Westview's third, uh, first grades are very small, so we have lots of room for open enrollment there. And Eastview and Redwood are pretty, well, Redwood's a little bit fuller than Eastview. Eastview still has some spots there as well. Grade two, we are having three at Eastview. They have a very small second grade, both at Eastview and Erieview this year, that the grade ones were small and they're feeding into a small grade two. So, we actually have quite a bit of room for open enrollment at Eastview in grade two next year. And then Redwood is, they're on, they're around 24, 25 and Westview is, they have room at Westview as well. Grade through, three, we kind of have the opposite. Eastview and Redwood have room at grade three. There's four sections of each of those buildings. Westview's only having, as of now, two sections at third grade and it's full. And that'll be something that we will watch those numbers like we do to see if we need to make an adjustment there. And then, this is ironic, fourth grade, everybody's 24, 25, all 10, all 11 sections. We have four at Eastview, four at Redwood and four at Westview. And that's kind of like the dream where all the sections balance across the buildings. But again, we do not, despite what social media might say, we don't have classes of 30 or anything like that. We are, we actually have a class this year at Redwood of 27. We won't have anything that large next year as I look at this. I want to compare our, as we go to three buildings, I'm going to give you the current projection and what the total enrollment was in 21, 22, which is the year after COVID, just so you can understand how the declining enrollment at each grade level has changed. So, at Eastview in 21, 22, they had 409 students. At one time, they had 480, way before I was here. Next year, it'll be about 360. Redwood had 332, not counting leaps, and they will be 420, not counting leaps, next year. Westview 21, 22 was 282 and they will be 264 next year as it stands today. Now, again, it's all going to change after all the open enrollment's done, but the point is, is even going from four to three schools, two of the schools will be where they were three years ago and one will be up about enrollment of the building that's being closed.
Jack?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you because I just want to make sure again, anyone listening to this, when it comes to the open enrollment, you spoke about that process that you try to honor those requests. How does that work when a, when a parent open enrolls their student into a grade, say like it's first or second grade and then the next year comes along? How, how does that work?
So, we, it is a year-by-year decision, but we generally, this year's unique because we're going from four to three schools, but generally they get to stay all the way through because we've accounted for them. This year is just a little bit unique because we have people that have requested different buildings that, like anyone that requested Erieview in the past, so now they've got to rethink where their request is and so forth. But it's all done first come, first served on open enrollment.
When do we notify, let's say you need, we need to make adjustments and classes are too big, is that anyone new coming in? Could that be somebody currently enrolled?
Typically what we do is, so, and if you remember in November, I gave a number, I'm sure you don't, but I gave a number when I did my enrollment summary in November. We had 175 students withdraw and 135 enroll, not counting kindergarten or seniors across the district. So, they don't all necessarily withdraw and enroll at the same grade levels, but we use new students who enroll to help balance out the numbers.
Okay.
Okay. Just a couple other things on enrollment. We, Redwood and Eastview, all of our tutors right now are either five and three-quarters hours or they're three and a half hours. Well, we're making a change to our tutor program that all of our tutors will now be seven-hour tutors across the district next year. So, we'll actually have more support for all of our kids with all of our tutors. So, Redwood and Eastview will see a pretty substantial increase because they will now have three seven-hour tutors each and Westview will have two seven-hour tutors. So, all of the buildings will be getting additional support. We had two intervention specialists at Erieview. One is going to Eastview and one is going to Erieview to help with those students who are on IEPs. And I think that's all I have to say. I could sit here and talk numbers and data all day, but it's Joelle's birthday in a couple hours, so I don't want to go too long. Any questions on that piece?
My only question is, I know that data's in flux, but it's a lot to track, so I don't know if it's feasible to, to do this at each board meeting or like some way to publish data just to give people comfort. Because I think, to your point, I haven't been on Facebook, but I think people are just appreciating the hard work that you have to do, Jack, but maybe not appreciating it in the way that we, we would hope they could just because it's hard to track. And, and you're trying to do the best you can do to make sure that you're planning ahead for your family. So, I want to, I, I personally empathize with that, especially as we're all navigating this change together.
Sure, I could do a brief update at the June board meeting after we've processed through all of that. I won't go as in-depth, but between now and then, there's so much in flux, but we probably have some better numbers in June.
Okay.
And I typically, every year in October and November, give you an annual report on enrollment. Okay, the next piece I want to talk about is Senate Bill 29. And for parents, yes.
Wait one second. I just, I just want to add too, because I know there's been some nervousness about whether or not we have enough room at Redwood specifically. And I, I want everyone to know that, you know, we're watching those numbers and depending on this open enrollment and how that shakes out, we may have a need to add another section at Redwood and we have the room to do it. And I just want everyone to be comforted to know that we have the space and there is even an extra classroom at Redwood should we need to open up another section of whatever grade it, it falls in. So, I just want to make sure that that is out there and people know and can find some comfort in that we have space.
We, we have space if we need be at all three buildings without using a music or art room. So, I just want to, you know, address that as well.
Just, I'll play board historian again. Just, just for some perspective, the last time we went through redistricting, I think it was 2009 and, you know, that time, because of the growth of certain developments, we, we were forced to redraw maps and, and so forth. So, really since that time, we've kind of lived with this reality and those of us who have now older kids have lived through periods of time where certain classes have been filled up and shifting has gone on. So, what this, what we're doing this year with the closure of Erieview and the transferring is kind of an extension of past practices that we've dealt with. But I do feel like with the three, with three buildings instead of four, it does give us an opportunity to potentially right-size those classrooms better than when we had four because, you know, the distribution between three and four is different, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Senate Bill 29 focuses on student privacy and data and you maybe have or will be hearing a lot in the news about it. It goes into effect August 1st in terms of what the school districts have to deal with. And that is basically any program our students or our staff logs into that has student data has to meet certain student privacy guidelines. So, to that end, Avon Lake has joined with numerous other districts in Ohio in something called ETLA, which I'm going to actually show you. This will be on our website once it's done, but I had, I took all of the programs that we have in clever and that, just in the district, email me any other programs that they were using and we are actually going through, there's 153 total programs. We're actually going through programs one by one through the site to make sure they meet the privacy agreements. And one of three things happens. They either meet the privacy agreement, they're great, they're going to be on this beautiful list, they're a no, which means we have to stop using them, or they're what I call NR, they're basically going to meet it, but they haven't yet, so they're not ready yet, but they will be. And this company has been working on this for Ohio schools. So, what we do is we go through and we put in our programs and I have to do every one one at a time, but with each program, this will be linked right on our district website. This is just kind of a preview. You can click the agreement. You can see that it's approved by the state. There's Ohio, there's all the data privacy things. And then there's something for each one called an exhibee where basically I just acknowledge that we're using this program in the district and this company will then back us if there's any student data privacy issues on any of these programs. So, right now, as you see, so far I have 62 that have gone completely clear. We have about eight or nine that are no's and then the rest were still working through. But this is something that you can feel safe, that your child's data will be safe and secure and you won't hear stories about, you know, power school data issues or things like that that you hear about on the news. Avon Lake will be in great shape.
Jack, on a go-forward basis, these, anything new will then come through this process as well?
Yep.
Okay.
It's, yeah, whereas it's a simple process, it just takes a little bit of time.
And will we have a policy for that? Just to state that.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all in our new policy, as we're rolling it over. We're required by law to have a policy on this.
Okay.
But I, I will add though, just to what Jack said, there are a couple of programs that, you know, many of your children, many of our teachers are used to using and want to be able to use and unfortunately, there's a couple that are downright refusing to be compliant with Ohio law. So, there may be some big changes in terms of what we're able to do, starting on August 1st. I just want people to kind of be aware of that. Some are surprising that, that companies, but many of the vendors that we use are also nationals, so they, they don't necessarily need to comply with Ohio. And if they lost Ohio's business, probably would not, it wouldn't be a big deal to them even though it's a big deal to us. And again, it's going to be some beloved programs that we're used to using here and so we just want to put the information out there so parents and our staff and our community understands that if we stop using something, it's not necessarily because we wanted to, it's because we have to because they're not going to meet the Ohio standards.
Well, I think this is great. I'm glad that we're moving in this direction. Honestly, I know this feels burdensome, but in healthcare, nothing goes live without lots and lots of scrutiny and I know one of my colleagues is in the room. So, yeah, I think patient, student, student data should be treated equally. So, I think this is a great move and I, I'm sorry you're going to have to go through some growing pains with this as well.
And since I'm already way over my time, I have one just last quick announcement. We have our social studies adoption. I sent out a messenger to the community about that. Next Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 in this room, we will have, we have two companies that are finalists at the younger grades, two at the older grades. Their reps will be here to answer any questions parents have. Their reps will be here to answer any questions parents have. There's a chance for parents to provide input into the programs, as you've seen in that letter. If you lost the letter or don't know what I'm talking about, it's on the website under the Assistant Superintendent page. It says Social Studies Adoption. And then April meeting, we'll have recommendations for new curriculum adoption and social studies to come to the table. And now I'm done.
Thanks, Jack. All right. Next item on our agenda is our public participation. And just as a reminder, our public participation at regular board meetings is permitted to allow members of the public to address the board on issues or public concerns, and it's not intended for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The primary role of the board is to listen and to reflect on your comments. Sometimes the board members may ask or respond, but not always. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation cards were put out before the meeting, but if you had not had a chance to sign them, they were by the registration desk. Those who wish to address the board must fill out a comment card, and each person will be given three minutes to speak. So with that, Dr. Debe, do we have anyone signed up today?
I have two people so far. Megan Dreliszek.
So I am not going to take three minutes, but my name's Megan. I was actually curious back before the November ballot went out, that there was a list of items that were, you know, on the chopping block and programs and things that would be eliminated in the district if it did not pass. Is there a list that is available or being generated if the May, if the levy or operating budgets do not go through? And if so, what and when will the parents know what items are potentially on the chopping block or what other costs will be incurred by parents? So that's really my only question. Thank you.
You know, I think at this time, we don't, we don't have that put together. I think that's a discussion. I think the thing that we've answered this question a little bit more generally in the past than specific in that the cuts that we've made have been very substantial and then, and if the levies continue to fail, you know, the next round of cuts will not be pleasant and things like class sizes and class offerings are logically next things that might be up to bat. But we're focused on, again, trying to have the conversation with the community that the, the solution that we're putting on the ballot is a compromise because we've lowered the ask by making the reductions that we put in place. So we're, you know, we're focused on trying to get that information out to the community so that they can make the informed decision when they go to the ballot box.
And just to add, if that is something that there are other significant cuts coming to get that out to people, there is a lot of chatter around, as you acknowledged earlier, just to make sure that that, you know, allows people to have some time to really mull over what this looks like.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons we've been focused on the cuts that we have been, the reductions that we've gone through over the last few meetings affect next school year. You know, it's really beyond next school year would be the next round of cuts. So it's, you know, what we're talking about if we would be in that situation would be for the 26th year.
Just for everybody, our fiscal year is June, or July to June, is that the right?
Yeah.
July to June, so all these cuts are impacting the upcoming fiscal year. And so we've got another November, not that we want to count on that. Like we need to have, I'm in camp, we need comfort now. Like we need progress now. So that's where we're staying, but just so we all know, those decisions would have to be made after another failed in November, just to make sure everybody understands the fiscal year of a school district. So it's not a deflection, just to make sure everybody's clear, we won't have to make those decisions unless we fail and fail again, God forbid, but that's just a piece of fact that I think is important, because many people work in organizations that that fiscal year is January to December and school districts are July to June. I keep saying, I hesitate, July to June.
That's right.
Correct.
All right. Dr. Remy.
Can I give a handout?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can hug the bench.
I'll just borrow that. So Ken Remy, thanks for letting me do my three minutes. I'll try to talk fast. So on behalf of the Avon Lake Travel Basketball Association, Ms. Erin Rudy, who's here, and some other members, I'm happy to announce, although I still owe two checks, but we will have net proceeds from the Harlem Wizards game to the school district for $25,000 even, which is exciting. And for those that are unaware what we're talking about, back in maybe late November, early December, I woke up with this vision of having a Harlem Wizards basketball game and then reached out to some folks in the community, met with Mr. Stobie and others who probably looked at me like I was crazy, but then was able to elicit Erin Rudy and some other help with Principal May and our athletic director Dale, and we started to put this into motion. I don't think that we envisioned in December that this would turn out to be the weekend before this event, like a Taylor Swift concert here in town, because people were trying to get tickets, but they were sold out. We thought we'd have maybe 100 or 200 people, some total, we had a little over 1,150 people come to this event. And for those that want to know a little bit more about it that were unable to attend, this was an event where we had a community activity right before the game started. We solicited and went to different businesses to donate specifically to Avon Lake School District, and we're fortunate that we were able to get a number of different sponsors, which I'll mention briefly in a second. Additionally, we also were able to engender good relationships with the city, the county, and of course, members of the school to be able to support this event. I will tell you that Mr. Stobie was a volunteer as well. Yeah, thank you very much for everybody that were able to volunteer. Ms. Macavino, our superintendent, Jack Debe, was actually a player in the game, however...
He was phenomenal.
At halftime, he was nowhere to be found without a hall pass, so I don't know where he went, but then made every kid happy because he announced that school was canceled the next day, so he was the best player for the event. But what I would say that was fantastic about this event, and there's grand enthusiasm for next year, and so we will be working on a similar event for next year because I think it's fantastic to bring our community together amongst to support our students, to be able to engender a community with our county and with our City Hall. And I was super excited about all of those wonderful things. We also were able at the event to actually honor our veterans, and we had actually honored many Vietnam veterans who came back to this country specifically, not to the same way that we supported and gave them the applause, and were able to hear from those veterans that were in tears, saying this was one of the most remarkable and wonderful things that they've experienced before, and we're super excited that we were able to offer that opportunity. The other thing too, was that we were able to include our two parochial schools in this event. We had teachers from both St. Joseph's and we had a priest from St. Raphael's for divine intervention for everyone that was playing in the game, not the Harlem Wizards. But additionally, we were able to actually have assemblies at each of the schools. So the students, if you talk to the kids that were all the way through Troy and our elementary schools and our parochial schools, they had Harlem Wizards actually come to the event and actually participate in that. So I know my time is short, but I'm just going to just thank a few people real fast and then we're going to move on. But, actually, I'll do this another time. I want to show two pictures to the audience. So what you're looking at here, and our board has this, this is all of our kids, all together with the Wizards, and it was fantastic to see children's smiles, parents' smiles alike, all together for such a great endeavor. And this is one of my favorites, which is one of our students with a Wizard, actually having what he said was the best night of his life. And so to me, the ability to raise funds, to put smile on our kids' faces, to promote wellness, and to be able to engender a community where our businesses all come together for such a cool event is just something we just have to infectiously do every single year. Thank you guys for the opportunity. I'll get you the two checks.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Remy's a humble guy, so he will not want me to go on about what a great job he did personally, but just being on the outskirts of this from the planning, there were a lot of people to coordinate this, and his day job's a little bit time-consuming, so I can appreciate, I don't know how you, how you were able to do that, but from the volunteers, to the parents, to the grandparents, to the kids, like this is what Avon Lake needs to be about. And it needs to be about coming together and doing great things that help our students. The financial impact of this is, I don't want to understate that either, because obviously in a situation like this, to receive additional funds is just overwhelmingly great, given the situation that we're in. But I, what I felt best about was that I saw, not only at the, at the event, but through the assemblies, that every kid got to benefit from this. And that's, we're, while we did have VIPs and certain things where people got certain, you know, every kid had a chance to see something that they wouldn't normally see in their, in their daily school environment. So kudos to everyone involved and all the travel basketball folks. I know you guys just really pitched in, I just really appreciate it.
And thank you. And one more thing I just will say, travel basketball this year, because of this event, will be giving two scholarships to two graduating seniors from the piece that we took from the tickets to support that we want to give back to these students as well.
Awesome. And most importantly, no one got injured in the game too, because I saw some people who may not have been in the best shape warming up, and I was wondering if we were going to have an injury, but I did not see anyone get hurt, so that was good. But thank you very much, Dr. Remy. All right, with that, we'll move on to the business part, portion of our agenda. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our February 18th meeting. Does anyone have any questions on those minutes? Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we'll move on to the Treasurers Consent Items.
Thank you. For your consideration, I do have our monthly Treasurers Report on the agenda for tonight, as well as, we do have one transfer tonight from our main athletic fund to the wrestling camp account. We do have an appropriation amendment, as well as approval of then and now purchase orders. Also included on tonight's agenda are the pay-to-participate fees for the upcoming school year. Those are, the attachments are included, which itemizes each sport in the agenda tonight, and those are also posted online. There is a separate document for both the high school and Leirwood, if you're interested in viewing the details of those. We also have an agreement with the Educational Services, with Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities. That's very much normal business for us this time of year. And that's all of my Treasurers Consent Items tonight.
Can I ask a quick question on the pay-to-play fees? So I've been asked to, I know there was discussion on multi-athlete discount. Is it correct that discounts are given if a student athlete is playing a sport for three seasons? Or can you elaborate for the community, for our active athletes that may rack up fees, what is the discount? There's the question.
Yes. So on each one of these documents at the bottom, there is a line as well in case someone would like to know for reference purposes. If a student athlete plays both a fall and winter sport, the spring sport will be free.
Yeah, I think the thing to acknowledge here is, I mean, this was quite, quite a journey to land at this fee schedule. Obviously, and this kind of brought up earlier, we had some ideas on how to make reductions before the levy failure, and then, you know, after receiving a lot of input, we really tried to take this in a different direction while still honoring the fact that we needed to increase the amount of revenue that's subsidizing these fees because of what the athletic budget is costing the district each year. So, you know, the fees, we went through lots of rounds of this to get to this schedule with looking at the numbers of students in each of these sports, the expenses and so forth, and I believe this has all been communicated out so that students are aware of this coming into next year before they sign up for sports, so. Anybody have any other questions on the pay-to-participate or any other items, the Treasurers Consent Items? Could I have a motion to approve the Treasurers Consent Items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Treasurers Discussion, Item A.
So the first item under Treasurers Discussion Action is an agreement, it's a master energy, electric energy agreement between the school district and Power for Schools. I don't know, Dr. Lovre, did you have any specific details you'd like to provide? And this is a program that we have been in for many years. There are over 170 school districts that are a part of this program. It's saved over $37 million just between fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 for those 170 school districts. And it is one of the largest consortiums throughout, throughout the state, recommended by BASSA, which is our superintendent's group, OASBA, which is our school business officials' group, as well as OSBA, Ohio School Boards Association, and the Ohio School Council, which, as for those of you who have attended our meetings before, Ohio School Council is a group that we utilize to do cooperative purchasing. So this has been a valuable program for us to be a part of in the past.
Could I have a motion to approve the master energy sales agreement?
I so moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is the Ohio School Council, School Bus Chassis item.
So this item is just so we can participate in receiving bids through the Ohio School Council. Again, this is a cooperative agreement that we use that has been successful in pooling together their book of business to drive pricing down for our school district.
Dr. Lovre, would you mind stopping up here? I think the, you know, the logical question, and I kind of know your answer, but I'd like you to just clarify for everyone, is, you know, for reducing busing, why would we be talking about buying another bus?
Absolutely. So we, I was hoping to get to the spring.
Without entering the bid this time, I was going to wait till the fall, and then I had a follow-up conversation with Bob Conrady, our head mechanic, who does just an outstanding job down at the bus garage, keeping the fleet in good shape. We still have a number of buses between the era of 2000 and 2008 that are showing wear and tear. They were there before the bus garage was built. They were sitting outside at our outdoor bus garage, and the age and the model of those buses, they are starting to show some severe undercarriage rot. So he showed me some pictures and showed me some buses, and he begged me not to go without purchasing a bus in the spring. So it may not be popular, but I would encourage folks to also remember that bus purchases come from a different checkbook than the operating fund. They do not come out of operating, they come out of our annual permanent improvement fund. The cost of a bus has increased dramatically over the years, but it's very important that we stay in a regular replacement cycle for our buses, because once those undercarriages go, we will not be able to use them, and it takes four to six months to get a bus, so we would be left in a, in a pretty precarious situation. It's likely that any busing savings or reductions that we make as a result of going to one mile, we will be adding routes and bringing back routes from our private schools or our charters that we currently contract with. Bringing them back into our fold saves money, so we'll need to have buses to look at that as well. I think the best practice for us is to continue the regular replacement of the fleet and to consider any reductions in buses after we know what we're dealing with in the fall. In particular, this bus that needs to be replaced in service, this is a great statistic, it is a 2003 Thomas Freightliner that was placed in service in September of 2002. So it is 23 years old, coming up on 23, it's 22 and a half, I don't want to get accused of exaggerating, and it currently has 223,800 miles on it. I credit our bus garage and our mechanics for keeping these buses running routinely for 10, you know, over 10,000 hours of operation, over 200,000 miles of service, and as of just a month ago, this bus was still in service, but we need to take it out of service, we need to make plans to replace it.
And this agenda item is only to approve getting a bid?
Correct. This is to enter the bid, we can take it, we can leave it. The next one would be to purchase probably sometime, I think June would probably be the earliest we would... earliest we would have that on the agenda.
Okay, thanks. Could I have a motion to approve the cooperative bid for School Bus Chassis?
So moved. Second.
Uh, roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next, move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Um, for your consideration, Item A is the list of suspended contact contracts due to our reductions that we have talked about in all of those things in the list. Some of the people that you see on there are from the reduction of not having teaming at the middle school. Some of the other ones are just the reduction of our enrollment and our current financial situation. There are a few people on that list that you will see in the recommendations for certified personnel that are being recalled off that off this list already.
And just to refresh memory, how many, I know we, before we went down this path, we had a retirement, so how many folks elected to retire roughly?
Was it about 17? I think it was maybe about 17. Unfortunately, in some of those, in some, many of those positions were not being, they're not being replaced. But unfortunately for us, some of the people that did retire were not in the right licensing area, so additional reduction of force was needed for that reason. However, we, this is, this list is what it is. There's not going to be any further reductions.
And of those 17, many of them were not teachers. Yeah. It was about half teachers. So just to clarify, there's no plans for other further reduction of force for...
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the suspended contracts?
So moved.
So moved.
Sorry. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, move on to the Superintendent's Consent Items A List.
Okay. So Item A is all of our wonderful donations. As you see, they are all listed there under the Harlem Wizards fundraising game that Dr. Remy just spoke about. We also had two, two other donations. Jack, can you put those back up? Thank you. We had two other donations. Love is stray donated, you can see the amount there, as well as some painting and cleaning services, so we just wanted to make sure that those were up there as well. You have your certified recommendations, classified recommendations, supplemental recommendations. We have some salary changes due to additional hours that staff has attained. And then we have some previously approved board items that we had a date wrong or had to change a date because somebody came back early and just some contract revisions. We have a foreign exchange student who will be joining us this this fall, and so those are up for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions on those?
Like, you're happy to, you can vote on those as we build them out.
I know, I looked ahead.
Yeah, just just for those listing, there's a couple consent items that have conflict of interest with one of our board members, so we're going to go through the Consent Items A first and vote on those, and then we'll talk about Items B. So could I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Consent Items A?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Superintendent Consent Item B.
So we have one volunteer, Jeferon, that we are asking for your approval.
Could I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Consent Item B?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Upstee.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Magier, do you have anything else to?
I have two things. We have been talking about, we put out in our newsletter about getting people together to do a cell phone policy. We're required by law to have one in place on July 1. Unfortunately, it added to the budget bill that is up for consideration, the state budget bill, they have put language in there to possibly ban all cell phone use in schools. So we're kind of holding off on bringing people together to create that policy, because if we don't have any room to create a policy to say when we can use phones and when we can't use phones, we're going to kind of wait and see what the budget bill says or or where that lands or where they think it's going to get approved. What we're hearing is that most likely it's going to get approved, so there, you know, could be on the horizon just a complete no using of cell phones in schools. So that is why we haven't gotten the committee together. We're going to put that out in my newsletter, too, but I just wanted people to, we haven't forgotten about it, we still know we have to do it, but there's been new language that has come up most recently, and so we're not going to bring people together to talk about something that might not exist. So we're holding off on that. I also want to...
Joelle, sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you. When is the vote on that? When are they, when are we anticipating a decision?
Budget, the the budget bill usually isn't voted on until June, which is terrible because it gives us one month to be able to do that, but we're going to, we're going to wait because we can get some feelers on whether or not it's going to come out. There's a lot of things between now and the approval process that get dropped out of that budget bill, and so we're just going to kind of hold off and wait a little bit on that. The second thing I wanted just to share, you know, in our efforts to constantly not only work smarter, not harder, and to look at efficiencies and where we can make efficient, have efficient running systems in our district, we're in the process of doing an efficiency audit at Central Office to look at our processes, our procedures, our databases, to see where we can come together and make our processes a little bit more efficient and possibly less costly. And so we're engaging in that process because I think it's really important that all of us, you know, as we're going through this really hard financial time, that we're looking, are we working as smart as we possibly can can work and can we be as efficient? And so we're in the process of doing that. It's looking that we will get a recommendation on improvements that we can make in our own work at Central Office, probably in early summer, and we will be looking to implement many of those recommendations starting in the fall. So just so people are aware that we're doing that as well.
Okay. Um, I I just wanted to throw in one thing. Mrs. Macavina and I had a chance to participate as visitors, we were not speakers, but Troy, Troy just did a career quest day. It was the second time that they've done it. And for those of you who don't know what that means, they went out and got approximately 30 or so different folks from the community representing different professions to come in for a day, and the kids got to choose three classes to attend and get, you know, they were 45-minute sessions, kind of career exploration. And I just want to give major kudos to Katya Malat and all the folks at Troy who organized that day. We've done something similar for our high school students here, but seeing it through the eyes of the fifth and sixth graders, it was just a really well put-on event. Dr. Remy, who was here earlier, he brought a couple of, since he's a doctor, he brought a couple of hearts that were not real hearts, but they looked like real hearts. But I know, you know, from psychology to business, to those who have very different career paths, it was just, it was just a really good thing to get our kids seeing what is ahead for them at that age, you know, as they start to make decisions about what classes they take in middle school and what direction. I just wanted to express my appreciation that the, one, that the district commits time and resources to, and two, to all the volunteers who who gave their time, because they did a great job in those sessions.
Was there a large line for the accountant?
I, 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 I may offer that next year, but I'm not sure anyone would sign up for it, so. But, yeah, there were, there was, what was the session we went to, the last one?
The raid?
Yes, the, the, yes. So we, we had some, we had a pretend police raid in one of them to kind of go through what some of our folks in the services do. So it was, there was, there was a lot of diversity, but just a, just a great day, so.
Joelle, that budget bill with the banning of the cell phones or whatever, if you know, does it include like smartwatches or any other, because these kids would be like, oh, I can't text on my phone, but my watch texts.
Yeah, I don't know all of the details. As we've seen, we make decisions in bubbles, and then it, we don't think about all those things, and so we have to come back and modify, so we're going to wait and see. And I just, another reminder that tomorrow's our second Take Back Togetherness Night. Something, got great feedback, the first one we have, where no homework, no practice, no nothing, just enjoy time with your families. We're already figuring out those dates for next year because they've been so wonderfully widely accepted here in the community, and so we want to continue that because we think it's really important that we give all of our kids, our staff, everyone, just kind of a mental health break to align with all of the other ways we're trying to support families and kids. And 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 we encourage you to put down your device tomorrow night and just enjoy each other's company, so enjoy that.
Does anyone have anything else? All right, the next time on our agenda is an executive session to talk about some employment issues. For those who are unfamiliar with this, when we have an executive session, we go in and discuss certain items. We don't take any action. We will come out of executive session when we're done and just conclude our meeting. So with that, could I have a motion to move, to go to executive session?
So, second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we'll enter executive session at 7:22 PM.
Thank you. It is 8:19, and I would like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Second.
Uh, roll, please.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.